statewide to include public means. However, the second class township code requires us to meet. And the sunshine act requires those needs to be public. Meet all three of these somewhat conflicting roles. We are conducting a virtual meeting with the best technology available short notice. We feel we're doing our best to comply with the. While still complying with existing laws and never anticipated a pandemic. Tonight's meeting has been advertised to be held online using zoom with login and call on information posted on our website. If you're calling into the meeting, I'd like you to encourage you to remain on the call. But to ask good township website by Google Easthamfield Township. And to log into our zoom meeting following the instructions on our home webpage, which listed on the agenda. Tonight's video and audio is being recorded. Also messages sent via zoom chat section will be read at the meeting and the logs saved to be archived with the video. Both will be made available on our website after the meeting. For tonight's meeting, Robert's rules will still apply. And the meeting will be run by a chairman who will serve as a host of the zoom site along with the township manager. Everyone other than the manager and the chairman will have their microphones muted in order for the audio to be heard clearly. Many people speaking at the same time combined with background noise make our means like this impossible to hear. During the meeting, only one person speaks at a time and they must be recognized by a chairman. For supervisors and staff, you'll need to unmute your microphone to speak when acknowledged. And will need to remute your microphone when done speaking or if instructed by the chairman. The steps to speak for staff and supervisors are simple. One, unmute your microphone. Two, request recognition by a chairman. Three, after receiving recognition, speak. Four, when done speaking, mute your microphone. Residents and business owners comments received ahead of the meeting will be read during public comment. Or before an applicable action is taken on an agenda item. A resident can also participate in the meeting using the zoom chat function. Messages received from residents during the meeting from chat will be read aloud just like asking a question. No verbal questions or statements will be accepted during the meeting from residents or businesses only chat messages. All messages must include a name and street address as required for public comment in order to be read aloud. Again, as a resident to participate in the meeting, if you are calling in. You must go to Google the Sanfield township website and log into our zoom meeting that is listed on our homepage. You may select to remain on your phone while you now also have the video access to the meeting. The chat button is on your bottom right of the zoom screen. Simply select it and type your comments or questions. To repeat, no verbal questions or statements will be accepted during the meeting from residents of businesses only chat messages. Any violation of the mentioned rules will be deemed to be acting out of order and your microphone will be muted immediately without warning. Continued violations will result in you being lecturally removed from the meeting. All voting tonight will be done by roll call votes and sure votes are all properly accounted for. Roll call will be conducted by the township manager. There will be no action taken on any non-agenda items of a non-emergency, non-urgent nature that rise during the meeting. All such items will be referred to staff and will be handled at a later meeting. Easthamfield intends to continue being during the pandemic as required by law. When there are agenda items requiring action, which is common to most meetings. You'll utilize this hybrid online meeting format for a time being until such time the governor lifts the prohibition for public gatherings. And we are permitted to meet as we are accustomed to. We ask for your patience and understanding as we strive to continue serving the residents. Business of a township while fully complying with the social distancing requirements prescribed by our governor. So with that, we will now move on to our first agenda item. First agenda item is a moment of silence and then usually is followed with the pledge of allegiance. So moment of silence, please. Normally, if this was back at our off our township building, we would be doing a the pledge of allegiance. That's not practical here with a zoom meeting. Just asked that again during the pandemic and light of everything else that's been happening lately. It's a good time to fly the American flag during the take time at your front of your house. So I'd like to encourage that. And Mr. LaFever, I see your hand up.
Yes, sir. I think it might be appropriate that on this June third day, we remember the massive mobilization occurring in the British Isles. Seventy six years ago for the largest amphibious invasion. As the allied forces attacked and started toward D-Day on the sixth. To defeat Hitler's fortress Europa. And many casualties, of course, occurred on the sixth and following that in that massive operation. I'd like us to consider that here.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. LaFever. So with that, we'll move on to our next agenda item. The next agenda item is our consent agenda. The purpose of the consent agenda is to. Prove routine items that usually require very little debate or discussions with opening up to the board. For any discussion on our consent agenda. Okay.
I had one. Question or just point of clarification. I don't know that we need to change the minutes. In the minutes on page two, when it talked and it's this is. I come up in another agenda item here shortly. With the discussion of the tabling of the sign ordinance. Part of the minutes reads that. There would be written comments given to staff and for us to review. But doesn't indicate a timeline and it was my understanding that we were going to have this comments by Friday. And I just want to make sure everybody's on the same page with that.
Really, that does sound like we need to change minutes for that.
I too was looking for that information before this meeting and we will have that as an agenda item and can address it then, please.
Okay, anything else on the consent agenda? Otherwise, I guarantee a motion to adopt the consent agenda. Okay, much for Mr. Wigglesworth. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from was it Mr. Bennett or Mr. Weaver?
Mr. Bennett.
Okay, second for Mr. Bennett. Mrs. Switzer, please pull the board.
Your mic's muted.
Yeah, you're still muted, Mrs. Switzer.
Let's try that again. Mr. Weaver.
Hi.
Mr. Bennett.
Hi.
Mr. LaFever.
Hi.
Mr. Wigglesworth.
Hi.
Mr. Russell.
Hi. So this sounds like guys have a five nothing. Next item we have is we move on to our action items. We only have one action item tonight, which is actually kind of nice. Development services offers a Kissel Hill sign ordinance petition. Acknowledgement petition and sending it to Easthamfield Township Plan Commission, Laxton County Plan Commission for. Review and recommendation as we discussed two weeks ago. Normally, this is a routine process where the board just acknowledges it. We usually don't have much debate or discussion. At this time, we allow the public review process to start and to actually start reviewing that. So I'm opening up to the floor.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'd like to point out upon this agenda as I did last week. Under item eight, it reads that for every would be two square feet of sign allowed. For every square foot of building face, but when you go to the example given. It works with lineal feet of the building side. And I believe that that should read. Squ- two square feet for each lineal feet of the building side.
Okay.
And again, I see no change. I understood we were going to have some visuals. Showing what what they had in mind and. Possibly some review of that mathematics of what could arise as a three hundred and sixty square foot sign. I did read in the ordinance, which is provided also. But the ordinance, I believe, is currently drafted as a one hundred and fifty square foot sign provision. Is that correct? Mrs. Switzer, Mr. Beck, is that correct?
Could you, could you repeat that question, Mr. LaFever?
I am saying as I read the ordinance that's provided with this agenda item. It states that signs are limited to one hundred and fifty square feet. Now, I would imagine that's not a new ordinance, is it? That's the existing ordinance that's provided for information?
No, but that is, that is not the existing ordinance. The existing ordinance is eighty square feet.
Okay, well, thank you. But then that one fifty square feet does not match. The mathematics of the proposal stated before the ordinance. Where again, it allows as much in the example of a forty by sixty foot building. A three hundred and sixty square foot sign, and that says it could be on one side of the building. I would like that cleared up before it goes forward and I am much more in favor of the one fifty square feet. Than I am of three hundred and sixty.
And I can, I can clarify that, Mr. LaFever. I did talk to Attorney Shank. And she did. She did confirm it was a typographical error in her example that you pointed out. It should say linear feet, not square feet.
Okay.
As far as the or in her example. It would be a building with sixty feet, sixty lineal feet on two sides and forty lineal feet on two sides. So with that being said, her math is for sides A and C. Would equal eighty square feet where you would get two square foot per linear foot of wall area. And then one hundred and twenty square foot for two walls that are sixty lineal feet.
Which however are limited to one hundred square feet by the proposal.
That is correct. So limiting it to one hundred, you get three hundred and sixty square feet of total sign area. That does not mean one sign would be three hundred and sixty square feet.
As I read it last time, and I honestly did not look for that in today's review. But it's said that that could all be on one face of the building. And that was my objection since that could be a six foot high by. Sixty foot or twelve by thirty foot, almost as large as the face of the building much. I think you'd understand why I express my concern. And a comparison to Las Vegas, for lack of a better one, that that's a tremendous sign.
What and what she was trying to. Show in her example is. The owner of that building could choose to put a three hundred and sixty square foot sign on the building. Or they could split it up and put multiple signs up that all total three hundred and sixty square feet.
Well, we have to let it go for review, I guess, but I am adamantly against that provision.
And and we can, that can get passed on to the plan commission. Like I said, this just starts the public discussion at this point. I would. Commission. So and you and you're certainly invited to come to the plan commission means. To give them your the feedback and your comments and obviously they got a correction to make as acknowledged by the lawyer at this point. So.
Very well. Thank you.
Mr. Bennett, you guys have to speak up a lot louder. You're not coming through right now.
Okay. But I have two, two questions and a comment. On the current ordinance, what's the maximum total area for building signage? If if this new signage amount is three hundred and sixty square foot feet. What is it now?
On the, the current maximum for a sign?
Yeah. And number, it's the last line on number eight. I've got that. That question and then. Again, to Ed's point, we were going to get some kind of a depiction. Can you give, can you, can you give us an idea of how their signage? Is going to compare with this, the Lime Spring sign on the south side of Roystown Road or. Heading south on the west side of the road. Near the Starbucks.
Absolutely. So.
Is, is, is their sign going to be bigger than that? Would it, would it allow them a big, a sign, would it allow them a sign larger than that?
No, it would not. So for the current ordinance. Eighty square feet is the maximum area for a freestanding sign. Except for the mixed use development center sign and businesses in the mixed use development that have. No mixed use development center sign on their property. For those properties. Bear with me, I'm getting to that section of the ordinance. The maximum permitted area of a mixed use development center sign is three hundred and fifty square feet per sign. Located on an arterial road. Or a maximum of one hundred square feet located along a collector or local road. For.
North.
For property that is in the mixed use development that does not have a center sign. The maximum area. Maximum area is one square foot per one lineal foot of street frontage up to a maximum two hundred and sixty square foot per sign. For building signs. The maximum area currently under our current ordinance. Is one square foot per one linear foot of tenant space frontage. Meaning the property frontage. Up to a maximum of two hundred square feet. Meaning one sign could be up to two hundred square feet for a sign attached to the building.
And now we're, and now we're moving that maximum to three sixty?
Only for proper, no, no, sir.
Well, okay, well, look, again, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm with Ed on moving this along. But I've got some concerns and and my concerns are deal with. The petition items four, five, six, and seven. It seems like we're creating a new class of. Signage for commercial developments. And I've got, again, concerns with sections four, five, six, and seven, and I will attend the planning meeting and. Express my concerns a little further at that point. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, there is one other item has come to my mind while we study this question. And that is where vendors or businesses. Advertise their business on a trucks, a truck or a trailer or something to that effect. And they park them in front of their building. And in fact, it becomes a sign. And I'm sure that some of those signs exceed the ordinance for a sign. I think that needs to be addressed in this review.
Mr. LaFever, that is already in the current ordinance and they are not permitted.
Are we policing? Are we doing them?
Yes, we are. All right. That's all I need to know. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Wigglesworth.
I believe at the, at the last meeting, in addition to asking for the questions to be even ahead of time, we did ask staff to do a little homework. And explain why the planning committee recommended that. We do this route. And John, I don't know if you're prepared to go over some of the statistics. We bought on the signs and variants or zoning hearing board issues.
Yes, sir. Mr. Beck, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Wigglesworth. Looking at the number of cases or applications that the township has received since August of two thousand and fourteen. When the current ordinance was adopted. The townships received ninety eight applications. That includes special exception plus variances. Fifteen of those were withdrawn, so eighty three applications went before the zoning hearing board. Forty five of those applications were for some type of variance. Nineteen of those variances were sign variances. Zoning hearing board reviewed those and approved sixteen and denied three. Five of those applications were for properties in the regional commerce center zone. Of the fifteen cases or applications that were withdrawn and did not go to the zoning hearing board for, for review. Or were either reviewed by the zoning hearing board or did not and did not receive a decision. Four of those withdrawn applications were for sign variances. To give a history dating back prior to twenty, prior to two thousand and fourteen. For the staffers of Kissel Hill property located at three oh one Roystown Road. They submitted six applications to the zoning hearing board. Four of those applications were for sign variances. The other property that is readily. Known in the regional commerce center zone and quite close to the staffers of Kissel Hill property is the Lowe's property. In its history, it's submitted six applications to the zoning hearing board, five of which were sign variances.
And as we kind of discussed, the. When we have that many variances and they're getting approved by the zoning hearing board, that usually means there's a flaw in the ordinance. So it sounds like we'll have a discussion, a public discussion with the plan commission, lots of reviews. Obviously, the attorney's got to correct the typo and more than likely it'll be an entirely revised document from what we're discussing today. That will be before the board for when we get decided. So it should be an interesting couple of months. Any more discussion on the sign warrants to. Let me read is. For Stover Company LP, offer to Kissel Hills zoning warrants petition, motion to accept the Stover Company LP's petition to amend. Easthamfield town design warrants. Sign regulations for commercial development within the regional commerce center zone and to authorize staff to refer. Several company LP's petition to Lancaster County Plan Commission and Easthamfield Township Plan Commission for review and recommendations. So any more. Mr. Weaver, did you?
Yeah.
Mr. Weaver, it's all you. So moved, okay. Is there a second then?
Second.
Okay, second for Mr. Wigglesworth. Ms. Switzer, please pull the board.
Mr. Weaver.
Hi.
Mr. Bennett.
Hi.
Mr. LaFever.
Hi.
Mr. Wigglesworth.
Hi.
Mr. Russell.
Hi. So I satisfied nothing and plan commission will start their reviews of this process with the township review tip. Moving on, we have no other items under action items. We do have a number of old business items which might actually result in some action. While that had been previously discussed, the first one is the Bowman Road at Church Street intersection. As a continued discussion and Switzer will turn that over to you to start the discussion.
This was discussed at our last meeting and I was tasked to find out a ballpark number for a traffic study. I reached out to our traffic engineer McMahon, McMahon Associates and got a quote. You see that in your packet. He's estimating about three thousand dollars for a planning level estimate. To look at the actual intersection and then to do a traffics or truck study, another twenty five hundred dollars. And if you recall, this was the intersection of Bowman and Church and the issue of tractor trailers trying to come off a church onto Bowman. And they were not necessarily doing local deliveries.
Do we have a rough idea really how many trucks we're talking about at this point ballpark without doing a study?
Chief has estimated maybe five to ten a year.
Could we do, could we do something on our end real quick first before we start going down the road of. And really determine how many trucks there are with our own stuff. We got, we got a counter at this point. Am I correct? Cut. Barry nodded his head. The. And we could configure the counter for with two tubes so they can actually count classification for trucks. At this point, my, do you have that ability in-house to do that?
We do not have the tube counters. We actually have the magnetic counters. So they. They account for the length of trucks.
So they can do at least a classification. We'd be able to determine eighteen wheelers and stuff like that then.
They should, yes.
So maybe, but yes, chief.
All right. I just wanted to correct what Cindy, I don't remember giving that figure of five to whatever a year. Maybe a week. But we've been having problems with our equipment because we've been trying for months to get an accurate number of trucks on Centerville Road. And because it measures the width. We're getting a lot of trucks pulling, say landscaper trailers that are showing up as tractor trailers because of the length of them. So I don't have a whole lot of, maybe he has more faith, but I don't have a whole lot of faith in that because Centerville Road, I think, showed. Like fifteen hundred trucks a week. I mean, it was an extraordinarily high number. And it does not jive with what officers are seeing. So I don't have a lot of faith in, in that equipment to measure. We have had trouble in the past with that configuration. Again, with the length of vehicles, it's hard to determine. I mean, we can set the length. You know, extend that length further. But again, there are some pretty long trailers that are being pulled by. You know, what would be landscapers, normal, smaller trucks. But again, we could find out if someone could lend us a, you know, a tube model. That we could get a more accurate axle count.
However, if they have that length, it's the still, the still problem, the trailer wheels are going to follow and come inside the curve. So I don't know if it's a problem to count them.
I've actually was just passed there today and looked at that. And it really doesn't look like that corner is disturbed that much. I mean, yes, there are some marks there, but it's not torn up like it has been in the past. Since we had put the white delineator markers around that corner.
And there are going to be a lot of tow trailers going to the stoner farm.
Yes.
I mean, that's, that's where everybody gets their mulch. And so that's going to be. But a tow trailer, even on a pickup truck, is not the same thing. Even if it's similar in length. It doesn't have the same turning radius that an eighteen wheeler does. Which has to swing out further to make the turn. It's more by wherever you call it by the, it's got the bends in the middle instead of. On the front like an eighteen wheel truck is with a tractor pulling it. So you don't feel confident, chief, in our, even though our equipment can do it, that you will get accurate numbers because of trailers?
We tried it, but I think twice Perry on Centerville Road. And I think that's what it was saying. It wasn't a fifteen hundred trucks in that week period of time in both directions, fifteen hundred in one way and fifteen hundred the other way. And I found officers sit there for most of a day and have counted maybe one. So I, I just don't have faith in it.
Okay. I always like to determine the degree of a problem before we come up with a fix at this point.
It might be, it might be cheaper to pay one of our, our employees to sit up there in Stoner Farm or something and count cars.
Be honest with you, it's cheaper just to have your engineering firm put the tubes out there. It takes an hour to put them out. It takes an hour to collect them. If that's, if that's and get the raw rate data and we'd see whether we even have a truck problem or not before we go do a whole study.
That would be an interesting concept that I'd actually like to put mine in.
Out there and validate, yeah.
And see, you know, what, what the difference really would be.
Because it might be down the road as we do more and more of these studies in-house and we just buy the equipment. It's like three thousand dollars for a counter. And so and your counters are much more accurate than the radar boards.
There, there are, there are newer magnetic detectors that are out there. Our, our technology. I think even though it was updated about five years ago, I think it's still. We've had trouble with, you know, the, the programs with this system for a while, but. I had discussed with Ms. Switzer about possibly purchasing, you know, a newer version. That utilizes radar as opposed to. The magnetic ones that we screw to the, the street.
I, I knew LCPC had a tube counter at one time, but I don't know if it's up to date now or. Would be something that we could use or maybe another township. Maybe Mannheim Township has one.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Tom.
I'd be in favor of working with our public.
Uh, I'd be in favor of working with our public works. Department in, in a first step and initial analysis of the situation before we incur any cost. I think that's the smart way to go and let's see if we have the equipment we need and. We could take, take a look at this again at some future point.
I, I've just like I said, I think it'd be good to have a sense of proportion as to how big a problem this really is. Not denying, because obviously we got a video of a truck swinging out to make the turn. So there's no denying it's occurring, but. It's one thing if it's a couple of times a day or if it's a couple of times a month, there's a big difference.
So chairman, I agree with Mr. Bennett.
Now, that's, well, we don't necessarily need to the motion. That's a very, all the board members are in agreements and Ms. Switzer has her marching orders.
We'll take care of it.
So I'm saying all nod ahead. So Switzer, you got your, you got your green light to do a little more research and the kind of determine the degree of problem that we're facing right now.
Okay.
Okay. Next up under old business township parks, continue discussion to reopen dream park and restrooms. As well as kind of tied in that is the request of heart to use the facilities for annual day camps there, starting on June 22nd. And opening of the restrooms, Hark will responsible for the clean sanitizing when they're using. They do not require the dream park to be open. So that is the overarching. Old business discussion was a good part of our discussion in our last meeting. So I opened up the floor to further discussion at this point.
And just as an added thought there, Hark does have a full COVID 19 plan in place for their facility as well as the park and the day camp. So they're all set, ready to go.
Right. And I think in any discussion about the dream park and the restrooms should be each, an individual discussion, even though they work together. Um, I think they're, they're two separate issues at this point. So maybe this Switzer, you can just update us on where Hark is at this point, what their plans are that you were aware of. How they're planning on doing the bathrooms and everything.
Their plans are to open the 22nd with a, two groups of children to keep them in compliance. They do have a waiver from the state. They are planning on cleaning the restrooms every half hour of general wipe down. And they would like to use both restrooms, but they do not need to use the dream park. And that's going to be going, only going to be while the, the playground is in session, while the, the camp is in session. So the, the restrooms theoretically could be, would be closed after they leave for the day and also on weekends.
So in essence, they're assigning a bathroom attendant realistically.
Yes.
They gotta clean them every half hour.
Yes.
It's gonna be somebody at, at the, at the building, the whole time, the rest of the whole time, the restrooms are open and they're gonna be spending a good part of their day cleaning the bathrooms. And then making sure no more than two kids are in the bathrooms at any given time.
Correct.
Question, driving by, I noticed there's some temporary porta potties there at the park. To whom do they belong?
We have one there that we held over from the winter months.
Okay. Is that going to stay or?
It's going to stay because people are using the trails and the fields.
Okay.
And so it's utilized pretty heavily.
Okay.
But it's not one that we clean and it's used at your own risk.
Correct. I think they, they service it once or twice a week.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Williams.
Um, I know last week when we had, we had a long discussion on this subject and I've given it some thought since then. And maybe have a little softer approach than, than the last time around. Is it worthwhile or would the board consider paying possibly regarding the dream park? Just simply removing caution tape or barricades to that on Friday. When we go to yellow with the understanding that the governor's order is still in place and we can let people decide. Our residents decide how they want to approach it, whether they want to use it or not. Maybe not make an announcement that it's open, but not restrict access to it either.
Okay. What's the rest of the board feel?
I also noticed when I went by that there was an apparent family at the gazebo and I could see some movement within the park, within the dream park. I don't know if that was one or two children. I'm sure that happens more than the moment that I went past. The people want to use it. It's a question of the liability is put forward from our insurance company that I guess we should be considering.
I think if we do go with the soft approach, we should at least put signage up. That gives them a social distancing guidance, basically. We don't have to publicize the fact that it's open, but we should put some signage up that tells people.
And everything that makes a challenge is each week now the governor's changing things again. So it's kind of, it's a, it's a moving, everything is a moving target, even what amber and green means at this point. And I, I personally, I've been keeping up with this stuff and I still get very easily confused as to what we can and can't do anymore. And I'm sure majority of the residents are either confused or some of them just don't care at this point. But I would assume more are just blissfully confused as to what they can and can't do. We all know what the social distancing requirements are. We know we're supposed to keep spacing between unrelated family members, even if we go green at this point. So I'm kind of in the opinion to let people self police at this point when it comes to our parks.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Bennett.
Um, on the issue of Hark and the use of the park and the restrooms. Did you, did you say we're going to vote on that separately?
I think that needs to be a separate discussion. I think if we basically take a hands off approach on the dream park and we've pretty much opened all the rest of our parks up at this point. I think the bathroom needs to be a separate discussion. One, we do have a tenant now that's using it. They have a very specific plan. I don't think they're going to want to have other people utilizing the bathroom that their kids are using right at during the daytime. Hours. So I think we should have a separate discussion about the bathroom versus everything else.
Okay. Right. So I'm, I'm of the, you know, on the, on the. On the use by Hark, I personally don't see any, any need to restrict them. They've got a good COVID plan. They have a, a good way forward. They're going to do the, do the sanitizing. I guess for me, the sanitizing of the bathroom. They're going to sanitize it at the end of the day and they're going to sanitize it at the beginning of the day. If people use it in between. You know, i- is there any, is there any real liability for us? That, that, that's. That's my, that's my thought there. I mean, I, it just seems like if we're gonna. Open it up and allow them to use it. Are we gonna, are we gonna allow other people to use it during the same time? If they're in the park?
You'd be hard pressed not to.
Right, exactly, exactly. So just, just some thoughts on that. And then on the, on the dream park, I support Mr. Wigglesworth's position on this. And the Switzer's as it pertains to signs and caution. But I don't, I don't believe based on what I read and I've read on the, from the insurance side of this, and I don't know anything really. There is not much municipal liability involved in, in any of this right now, as long as we act reasonably. So again, for what it's worth.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bennett. How about we take the park up first? I want to talk about the bathrooms a little bit more. Pretty much at our last meeting, we, we reiterated that we really had not closed down the rest of our parks. The only thing that had been closed down was the dream park. Facility itself and the bathroom at AHR Park. Everything else had remained open during this whole crisis and basically it was self policing with residents. So what's the viewpoint of the board right now related to the dream park? I think I got Mr. Bennett's position. I got Mr. Wigglesworth's position. You guys heard mine. So really it's Mr. LaFever and Mr. Weaver's position at this point. Hey, well, I, when we go to yellow, that still doesn't allow this type of park to be open, does it?
If it were not owned by the municipality, you're correct, it does not. There's some wiggle room or discrepancy because it's municipal owned and what. Requirements we have under that.
It's not to be open under yellow. So correct?
If it were not municipal owned, it would be closed.
But it is. Does that mean it's? Does that mean it's okay then?
It, it's Diane. It, it's difficult to. The municipality municipalities are fairly exempt from all these requirements according to the governor.
Right.
But we do have a park facility. If anyone, I mean, my, my read on, on the regulations is municipalities are exempt. But he doesn't make the distinction between municipal playgrounds and private playgrounds. He just says playgrounds.
So it's kind of a gray area, but I think if we take the tape down and the barricades. Will take a certain amount of time to get one or two kids in there and then right immediately thereafter, I think it's going to be right back to. What it always has been. So. I think definitely we would want signs up. At least cover ourselves to some extent and to let people know that it's at your own risk. That'd be the minimum protection I think we would want to have for the township. I, I think it's just remind people again what the responsibilities are. I think at this point, everybody kind of knows what they need to be doing is whether they're going to follow it or not. At this point's the question. There's a lot of fatigue with all this at this point. There's a lot of. People there are just kind of throwing up their hands at this point, which is kind of natural. Again, they stay self quarantined for such a long period of time. So I think we put the rules up and remind parents in particular what the responsibilities are and we let them self police. And maybe explain that, you know, how much cleaning or lack of. How well these things are being cleaned or if they're not being cleaned, they should know that too. Like, yeah, the township is. Either playing this once a day or we're not touching it. They should be aware of that. So they don't, you know, think it's being. Sanitized or sipping water every day when it's not. I agree with that. Kind of seen nodding our heads. So.
Well, I didn't speak yet, but standing the polls for 13 hours yesterday. Most everybody I would say brought a mask, but almost everyone asked if they had to wear them. And the poll was set up for social distancing and everyone got along fine. If we open the dream park, I think we're relying a lot on the fact that children are less susceptible. Because those children are going to play as children play and there's no way to keep them from that. Yes, we, we should put signage up. There is one concern I have, Mrs. Switzer, from what you said is that if I heard you correctly, Hark feels they own those bathrooms during the day. When they are using our park and that others are not welcome to use them.
That's not gonna work. No, that's not necessarily the case. They just need to develop a plan for their facility while they're there, that this is what is being done. I think they are fully aware that if those restrooms are open, there will be other people using them.
Okay.
I, I'll, I'll put the flip side a little bit on that right now. They're paying to clean it. Um, and that's why I want to have a separate discussion about the bathrooms. They're paying to clean these bathrooms. They're paying to have an attendant there and monitor it. We shouldn't have a, a people there playing volleyball or something, older kids and something like that, or adults kind of going to a bathroom there being used by. Now, five year olds, six year olds, four year olds, whatever their age is at this point. Um, I just have, I just have concerns about that from a multiple different reasons, but. I mean, if they're, if they're limited by their plan right now of not having that both bathrooms open and basically one person in the bathroom at a time. I think we should kind of actually give some thought about whether it's just limited to Hark and not open to the public. When Hark is paying for all the costs and providing the attendant. And we can certainly sign it that way too. This discussion. Well, that brings up another thought, which is. Hark is not allowing their kids to use the dream park, but yet the dream park is open at the same time that they're there. So I mean, it's kind of up to them to lease around kids, but I can see where that could be a bit of a problem for them. With kids and the parents saying, well, why can't they use it? Cause it's, there's obviously kids over there playing. Well, Hark does, Hark does a pretty good job. It's organized activity. Um, and they have, they have people assigned. Basically have aides assigned with the, the kids that are at the AHR Park. Um, and they do everything by group function. So anyway, they would end up in the playground is if Hark decide for that group leader to send all the kids to the playground at the same time, because they gotta keep head count. They can't have kids all of a sudden just disappearing from their groups. And they're real particular about keeping their head count together, keeping them in a group. Format. They don't want them running all over AHR Park. Um, cause then that's how somebody gets lost.
I would envision a mother bringing children, one or two go to the Hark and there's one or two others younger, maybe that go to the dream park. So I don't know how we can manage that to be only for Hark. I know, I understand what you're saying about adults being in there with young children. It's not easy. One solution would be for the township to provide staff for cleaning that, not Hark. Then we manage it as the township. I don't expect that's going to get too much popular reception. So, but I thought I'd mention it.
Yes, Mr. Madonna. I see you're raising your hand.
Well, you know, during a normal year. Hark and the public share that all year long when they're there. Uh, we, we do not in any way restrict. Tennis players, anybody who's using the pavilion. So it's shared all summer long with the younger kids. We don't restrict that and it's, it's usually been Hark that watches their kids. You know, there's always someone, they usually have a table up there by the one set of bathrooms and they generally don't police the other bathrooms that are down towards the dream park. But again, all summer long, it's shared by the entire, you know, resident population.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Ben.
Question for Mr. Madonna. In, in normal times. What is the standard cleaning regimen for our bathrooms? By the township.
We clean them first thing in the morning. We empty the trash and clean up any, you know, issues inside. And that's usually it. And the police lock them at night. And generally they, they do look in there and if there's any issues, they let us know the next morning before they're open. Only on major events do we send somebody in on the weekends to check the bathrooms.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
And my, and the opposition with the bathroom is I don't want our public work staff serving as bathroom attendants during this, especially on the weekends. So whatever we decide relating to the bathroom, but just my only resistance to all this is not having our staff. In a perennial cleaning mode of these bathrooms right now.
Well, I think if we open them, we, we like the dream park, we post them with signage. So as far as the township is concerned, this is our policy. This is our cleaning schedule. This is what we're doing. Hark, on the other hand, is under their own rules and regulations for their, their event or their, their activity. And they have their own. They are doing it every half hour. They have an attendant. So. I don't really see a problem. Other than potentially. So Hark leaves it. The public works guys take a look at it Friday morning. They get closed Friday evening. They get opened again on Saturday. They won't have any attention until Monday morning. Which is not necessarily a bad or a good thing. It's just, that's how it works out.
Right. And we haven't done that. And that's the normal way. We have done it to this point.
Yes.
Right. I don't think we need to do any more than what we've always done.
I'm reminded. Ditchwin who came in and said that he thought we were looking for a problem to find a solution, that's not exactly what, I have it wrong. But why don't we just open it up, and then if there is a problem, then we have to have a solution. Let's, let's use the dream park, let's use our facilities. With signage, with protection, but.
So did you just make a motion?
It may be that, please, yes.
Okay, do we, it's a motion to open up the dream park, to open up the bathroom to keep with our regular schedule and to post both the bathroom and the dream park. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, a second from Mr. Wigglesworth, Ms. Schweitzer, can you pull the board, please?
Just to clarify, what was the motion? It was to
Open up the dream park, open up the bathrooms, keep to the regular clean schedules and to post both the bathroom and the dream park.
Okay. Mr. Weaver.
Hi.
Mr. Bennett.
Hi.
Mr. LaFever.
Hi.
Mr. Wigglesworth.
Hi.
Mr. Russell.
Hi.
So the eyes satisfied, nothing, the park is fully open.
And by the way, that was looking for a problem. Solution looking for a problem is what it was, so.
Mr. Madonna, you're waving your hand up and down.
Just, just one more question on that. I understand there are some restrictions on public drinking fountains. And also the water feature that's unchlorinated in the dream park itself. Does this include those items, or do we leave the drinking fountains, do we turn them on at this point? That would just be a clarification of.
I, I, my personal opinion would be to leave those both off. People can bring water bottles, I'll see if anybody else has a different opinion, can speak up.
I agree with you.
I agree also.
Hi.
Okay, so there you go, Mr. Madonna.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, one more question, on the issue of the Hark utilizing the, the park, are we, will I need a vote on that?
I don't think we need to at this point.
No, because you opened the facility, so I'll just advise them that they can carry on.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, so that covers it, is there any other old businesses brought up in a previous meeting that I'm missing at this point? For some reason didn't make it on the agenda.
I'm maybe, and Mrs. Schweitzer, if you have it in a manager's report, just a status on the Penn State project. Where they are with building permit and plan review of foundations and those questions.
They're within, I would say, inches of getting a building permit issued for the foundation and putting there's still conversations going on between Jason Stevens, code administrators, and their contractor. I believe their site work is still progressing along, they are now working on the state road alignment portion, the portion that is outside of the cartway at this point. You've noticed that they moved their, their fencing back so they can work in there. They've been restricting lane access because of things that they've been doing down at the Harvard, I believe. This past week that I noticed. The building permit's been paid for. We are reviewing the temporary construction trailer permit, that's almost ready to be issued. And I did notice that they are starting work on the Brookside, which is on the east side of State Road, they're moving this dirt around.
If anyone wants a sort of a simple yardstick of the magnitude of this project, a school project often which is a fairly large construction project might have three office trailers. You drive down Harrisburg Avenue and see there a dozen or so, that is a massive construction office complex and speaks to the magnitude of this project. So, we've got a big one.
Sounds like you want to dust your hard hat off and put your vest back on there, Mr. LaFever.
Don't tempt me.
Okay, seeing them are old business, under new business, I ask this to be added to the agenda, this conditional use hearings. Discussion on having special counsel to provide party status to township staff, and so on, Ms. Schweitzer, if you can start it. And then we can continue this discussion.
So conditional use hearings, there was a problem with the recent hearing that we felt that there should be some more party status to the township side of things. When a conditional use is heard, it's, it's heard, the board of supervisors, the jury. So therefore, they should be remain impartial, they really can't present a case. You rely the applicant and anybody opposing that to do those, those cases. And that was somewhat lacking in the last hearing, so then the discussion was centered around possibly what can we do? And John took a look at the MPC, the Municipal Planning Code, and in there, you are allowed to appoint special counsel. So you could have a special counsel representing the board of supervisors, or you could have special counsel representing staff. And as the memo that Susan Piper presented to the board to, earlier today, they can't talk to one another, you have to have a kind of a wall. Which makes it difficult then for staff to understand the feelings of the board supervisors. The other option is to have a hearing officer, which either is a board member or a solicitor. So you could also go that route. And if you had that, then the township could present their case in opposition or, or for, and that you would have the applicant.
Just wanted to go over, we did talk about this in Admin and Finance, myself, Mr. Bennett, and we asked Ms. Schweitzer to do some research, I just expressed to her my frustration with the last process and the fact that you know, when we actually observe problems, with my technical background, there was problems I observed, I really couldn't do anything. And that really, I'll be honest with frustrated engineering me pretty badly during that process. And realistically, it was not my role in that position to start picking holes in the applicant's position. I'm supposed to just sit there silently and take in the information and render a verdict. And that's not my nature either. So that, that was why we wanted to have this, because I wanted to have this discussion and get the feel of the board. We have some conditional use hearings coming up, hopefully not anywhere near as controversial as the last one. But we, I figured it'd be good to have, start, have a discussion, have a process in place before we actually have next controversial one versus when we have a controversial one, and then we try to throw a process together on the fly. So just taking the lessons learned from what happened with Knoll Road Track and the verdict that came from the judge. I thought that would be a good idea for us to have this discussion. So I wanted to see what everybody else in among the board's members are, maybe Mr. Bennett, if you could weigh in, since you have a little bit more time to think about this than everybody else.
Yeah, they, I'd be glad to, there was also, we also had a thought is, was there a better way to give the community more stand, standing in, in this process, given the fact that we could not technically advocate for them. So that was, that was part of the consideration also. We just thought that, that a third advisor, if you will, bringing a third party into this would be a good way to, you know, move forward, you know, we, we need I mean, I envisioned this as, as, as our counsel, Susan, would be the counsel for the board of supervisors. We'd bring a third party counsel in for staff and, and the residents, and then of course, the applicant would have their, would have their counsel. On, on the board's side, Susan would make sure that the, that the hearing is held properly and that we deliberate accordingly, and we have a, we have a, a sound decision. So, you know, I, I just think this would be a, a good, we wouldn't have to do this in every, every conditional hearing. But in the, in the, in the hearings that, there's the potential for some controversy. We think giving bringing in a third party on this would ma, would make a lot of sense.
What's the board feel? Because if, I think the process that we would have in place if we were to go down this road. We're not going to necessarily know what's controversial until the application comes in, everybody gets a chance to read it. And you might not really even know that to the night of the hearing, as a lot of times, you're not given that much time, and the conditional use could be two hundred plus pages like the last one was. Which, you know, when it starts becoming the length of the New Testament, that starts becoming a little problematic at reading it. In its entirety. One thought is that, and this has to be vetted with Susan a little bit more. That if there's a desire by the, a board member or board members plural that there's a, there should be, staff should have be part of the process. That, that issue would need to be about staff having standing need to be raised right at the very beginning of the hearing. And more than likely the hearing than immediately tabled. So that there's no further additional discussion. That would then give staff time for them to review the case, talk to the special counsel, and start making their case for, against, raise whatever issues they might see and observe. But realistically, if we're going to make that call to bring special counsel on, it had to be right at the beginning, at the start of the hearing. And then, Ms. Schweitzer, if I'm off board, I think that was kind of one of the ways, things that Susan was leaning towards, if we were to go down that road.
Right.
So that would, that would put the preponderance on us right off the bat, at least as the judges in this to make a quick determination, or staff could too, if they see something that they feel that they're going to want standing, it, it all needs to occur at the very beginning of the hearing. Not, at not now into the hearing when we have a whole bunch of residents speaking, all of a sudden we decide we want staff to have standing.
I see this as a very, very important that staff makes a determination. Is this in accordance with ordinance? Is it a simple matter? What are the adjoining properties? Actually, my understanding, they can't even solicit the board for their opinion of a rough plan, a preliminary plan, they need to make that determination upfront. And I would think many of these projects would speak to their dis, dislocation to where they are as opposed to what's around them right from the get-go. I think staff needs to be very careful with applicants as they begin the initial review, that they don't indicate one way or another, other than what the coordinates is and what the requirements are. And then staff would have to say, hire somebody, and that's up to the building, to Mrs. Schweitzer, to the manager to say, yes, we're going to hire somebody, and the board's out of it. That's what I'm understanding, that's what I'm reading.
Now, in the case of the Knoll Road, Road issue, that call probably would not have been made.
That's what I was saying, it's going to have to be both sides, either staff has to raise it, or the, the board has to raise it, but it needs to be raised at the beginning of the hearing.
I'd like to add to
Go ahead, go ahead, John.
I'd just like to add to Mr. LaFever's point. Just because the township does not become a party to the case, does not preclude any resident or property owner from becoming a party to the case. And in that instance, once they're a party to the case, they have, they have the ability to challenge an applicant and provide testimony in opposition of that applicant, if they chose, if they choose to do so.
I would admit that the people at Knoll Road needed, needed guidance if they were going to be brought to the table. I don't know that they knew other than that they approached the board with their concerns, with their personal objections. I don't know that they knew that they could do more without someone help.
I would agree with Mr. LaFever on that, I, I think obviously, it's a confusing prog, process, is, it's clear because we made a mistake according to a county judge with that, and I don't think that we should expect the residents or, I don't know, I think that we need to look out for them and protect them in that way. But if I understood you, Mr. Russell, either staff or the board could raise that issue, is that correct? The hearing?
That would be my recommendation to all of us, that that would be the ground rules, it just would have to be at the beginning of the hearing.
Because that would cover the last situation that we have, and then would also cover I guess, future ones coming up.
It could be one where staff sees something that we don't.
Sure.
And so again, they can cut both ways at this point, where there, there's a concern that might be a little bit buried deep in two hundred or three hundred pages of of expensory evidence that's been submitted here. That we're not going to catch because we all work full-time day jobs.
As I read the solicitor's memo that she provided today, I think there's very clear delineations of how staff and board of supervisors act. And I don't think, Mr. Russell, that we as a board can be in any way involved in that with the staff and, and playing that role, we're supposed to be judge advocate, period.
Now, I, I agree that we cannot, once, even for the one that just came in, we can't talk to staff about it. But my understanding from Susan is, we as a board, and we can, Ms. Schweitzer confirmed this again, we as a board can, at the very beginning of the hearing make a request for our staff to get party status and then table the, the hearing.
One thing I was, I do think this is a good idea. One thing that happens on the planning commission is you see a plan and nobody thinks there's a problem with it until neighbors get wind of it, and then they come in and tell us all the problems with it. So I think the best, one of the good ways to get, make a decision whether to bring a special counsel in is the neighbors could have input early enough for that to make a difference, and I don't know the timing of everything. I can't picture how that all works out, but I think that the adjoining property owners could be the trigger for is this going to be controversial or not, in fact, they're the main trigger, I think.
But it has to, they have to have a legitimate reason to object to it. Not simply because they have deer in their backyard and they don't want it there, or it adds more traffic, or they have to have technical reasons why. And to give them false hope, that's not fair either.
And that, now go into a different discussion, I just want to know if everybody is comfortable with this being explored more. And maybe a little position paper being developed by Cindy for us to possibly adopt as guidelines in the near future. That's, that's the big picture for tonight, we're just introducing this concept tonight.
Mr. Chairman, if I can make one more comment?
Yes, Mr. Bennett.
All right, on the I agree with Susan that, that for the most part, our township manager should be the one deciding on, you know, whether we should move in this direction in any given conditional use hearing. The other side of it also is, I'm assuming that, that this could percolate up from the planning commission too, where the planning commission sees a an issue or a situation where they may want counsel of some, of some kind. That, that could be the trigger also, is that okay with it?
That could be, not, not all conditional uses get before the planning commission.
Oh, that's right.
Okay.
So that's, that's your bigger issue, most of them are going to go right to the board of supervisors, and then the planning committees will live with our decisions.
All right, sounds good.
I think, I think if everybody's just in general agreement, we can let Ms. Schweitzer and the planning group maybe put something together and take it back, and we'll flush it back through the board again. Like I said, I just wanted to introduce the concept. I would like to introduce one other thought for everybody's, this is the bigger picture thought, and it's conditional use hearings themselves. I think one of the biggest learning lessons for me, because I've not really had a true bad conditional use hearing like we had with this last one. I think the one big lesson that came out of this one is, there's practically no way ever to deny a plan in conditional use hearing. So I, I, there is absolutely no reason where we can legitimately deny unless there's a flagrant not following the steps of the conditional use. Which any half decent attorney would make sure would not happen. So the question I want to throw out before the board is one that I've had passports of supervisors that I've worked with many years, over the years, talk about. Is why do we even have a conditional use hearing in the first place? is why do we even have a conditional use hearing in the first place, when that outcome is already predetermined? I mean, all we are doing is giving the residents false hope that there could be a denial, or there could be restrictive conditions applied, when that does not occur, it cannot occur. I mean, any condition that the applicant doesn't like, they can challenge us in court, and they're going to win on that too. So why do we even subject ourselves to conditional use hearings in the first place? Give residents false hope that they can actually provide input into this conditional use hearing, when applicant doesn't have to follow or do any of that stuff in the first place? So that's just the, 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 the big picture, I, I the only people that seem to like conditional use hearings, and forgive me, John, for saying this, are planners and lawyers. Planners, because if they aren't, the false belief that you can really influence things with playing, with the conditional use hearing. And lawyers, because it results in lots of legal fees. I don't see any benefit to having, I, no one's has ever convinced me of a case where really a conditional use hearing really makes that big a difference. If it's a non-controversial condition, applicant would have done it anyways in the land development process. So why do we have these conditional use hearings in the first place? Other than guys like Harry Roth, when they wrote our ordinances, like them. So that's the picture.
I, I, I think too that conditional uses, on the other hand, were created and used more readily in our ordinances, as opposed to going to the zoning hearing board. But you're right, if we rewrite our, our zoning ordinance to incorporate those type typical conditions, we wouldn't need a condition use or a special exception.
And we just, we just tighten up, this is, we have about seven or eight items, major items in our ordinance right now that require conditional use. We just tightened them up, we know what we don't like and don't like, so it does, it is codified in the ordinance. And get rid, and over the next year or two, let's get rid of most of these conditional use hearings, they're just a waste of time and money. We got to pay for the stenographer, we got to pay for all these legal fees, and we get nothing out of it, and all we are, are, get out of is grief from the residents, because they feel we're approving something they don't like, and we really can't deny it anyways, or if we deny it, we're going to lose in a lawsuit. So why, why subject ourselves to this in the first place, it's a lose-lose in every aspect.
I think, sure. By the time you get to the hearing, it's too late to change anything, because yeah, you're stuck with the conditions that you wrote into your ordinance, but it depends on what you write into your ordinance ahead of time, and that's, you're never going to catch every condition, but I think that's where you need to, that's the benefit of it, is the time of writing your ordinance.
Right. So what's everybody else's thought, my, I'm really jaded towards conditional use hearings anymore at this point. I, I could say it's a pre, it's already predetermined, it's a predetermined outcome. If the applicant agrees to the conditions, that's something that could have been done in the land development process anyways. Usually the good applicants hear where our concerns are, and they adapt the plans accordingly, when they hear what the concerns are, to keep the process running smoothly. And if they disagree with it, they just challenge us, and they're going to win. I mean, we can't put, we can't put overly restrictive conditions on any conditional use hearing, so we're going to lose in that situation every time.
Let's look at the conditions, because there was a conditional use that we used to increase the density of a major tract. Where would we have, how would we have managed that client or that proposal coming in with ordinance? We would have to say that we are only going to allow five units per acre, period, that's our ordinance, that's where we stand, there's no exceptions, right? Something like that?
Needs to be codified, the ordinance a little tighter.
Yeah, and now let's take Noel Road. We look at that one, and again, we would have had to do it on density and access. So our ordinances have to prevent tighter density, say, than either some adjoining, which from the get-go, you've heard me how many times, say, I can't understand why this one didn't qualify that way, and/or access, and we know the access problems there without reiterating. We've allowed access differently, we've set precedent over in the cornfield behind the, behind the, um, behind the office. Yeah, we have to tighten everything up, I believe, and then we have to stick to it. We have to hold to exceptions.
Yes, Mr. Bennett. You're trying to talk.
Okay, um, you know, I, I hear what you're saying, I guess for me, it would come down to, again, tightening up the ordinances, that's number one. But how many conditional use hearings have we had in the last three or four years? Has, has the petitioners ever failed to be granted their relief? Or what they're looking for?
Every single conditional use hearing that has occurred in this township, the petitioner has gotten their conditional use. And, and the last one was the first one that resulted in a court case. Pretty much every other one turned out to be a rubber stamp. Non-controversial conditions, or there was a little bit of pushback on some of the conditions, and we remitted.
There was one, there was one other, Mr. Russell.
Which, which one?
Stone fence.
And that was a, a legal error.
Yeah, that was, that was a little bit of a different situation.
It, it was, it was a legal error, and in that instance, the township actually, from what I understand, advised the public and paid for the public's attorney for their challenge.
Right, and as that was, and that, to be honest with you, actually predated me, that's how far back we're going at this point. That was, 10 years ago.
Early 2000s.
Yeah. And basically what was happening is there was a time extension that got missed, so it was deemed approved.
Let, let the, let the John in his planning department put together where the conditional uses are at, and we'll have a planning group meeting and kind of move forward from there and see what, what those conditional uses are now, what maybe we could tighten up in the, in the, in the ordinance and kind of move along that way.
I, I, I just took a look at the different, in the different zones, and the uses that are permitted by conditional use. And to your, to your point, Mr. Russell, you're absolutely right, a conditional use is a misnomer, just like a special exception. These are uses that are permitted, they just require a higher level of review to make sure that they meet the specific criteria that is established for them. These are uses that, in most instances, the board wants to review themselves to make sure the criteria is met, rather than have the zoning hearing board or the zoning officer just review them. So they are permitted uses. It's just a higher level of review to make sure that they're meeting all those criteria.
And a couple of years ago, I would, I, I'm not disagreeing with what you said, Mr. Beck, I would have agreed with that. But the fact that we as a board cannot talk to staff, means you're not getting a higher level review. I mean, the moment the wall goes up between staff and everybody else, there is no high-level review, and when we start getting 200 and 300 applications in, and it's just up to the board of supervisors themselves individually to do their homework, and we can't talk amongst each other as a collective group, there is no high-level review, in fact, that's a low-level review at this point.
I, I completely agree, and out of the, 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 we actually don't have that many conditional use, uses. Most of them, I think, we could enumerate in the ordinance and have specific criteria to meet the approval process without having to go before the board for a conditional use. There are a few that I think does require the board to take into consideration on how they want staff to proceed with them.
So how's the rest of the board feel, Mr. Weaver, Mr. Wigglesworth, Mr. LaFever? Mr. LaFever just stepped up, way.
I'm with you, I was very frustrated by the, uh, the last go-around. I feel like we had legitimate concerns and legitimate reasons for denying, denying the conditional use. It was frustrating to lose in counting toward some purpose of going through these. You know, like you said, for the most part, we do approve all of them, and then when one comes up where we did have some legitimate concerns and we denied it, it doesn't seem it's effective, and I think your approach might serve us better, just to tighten up the ordinances and get rid of it.
I believe we have more of these, say, called postage stamp and small lot things, where there may be a move, a desire to have more dense. We did some in Landisville, of course, that's a village, so it wasn't a problem. But I think we must expect some more of these, and so yes, I would be in favor of tightening up the ordinances and seeing if we can avoid the hearings.
Mr. Weaver?
I agree, I mean, I was just thinking, by the time you get to the hearing, the cake has already been baked, so I think we need to specify the ingredients ahead of time, so they only have, yeah, and basically I'm saying tighten up the ordinance. Conditions.
We, we, you can't watch the Food Network before the next meeting.
I didn't have dinner yet.
Mr. Bennett, what's your feelings?
Sounds like some, uh, some work for Mr. Beck and Ms. Switzer. Kind of tight, let's get our ordinance tightening recommendations in front of us as soon as possible and go from there.
Okay, so we have two different homework assignments that are coming out of discussions tonight. One is a memorandum for, for the board's future consideration relating to special counsel or a conditional use hearing officer, and the processes each, and how to select one or the other, or both, depending on the situation. And then the second item is for Mr. Beck and Ms. Switzer, and probably with the planning working group down the road, to work on, uh, looking at our conditional uses in general and tightening up the ordinances. Does that kind of get, get it from everybody, if all I got to see is nodding heads at this point?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, that was probably our longest discussion of the night, Mr. Switzer, any other new business before we move on?
I have none.
And Ms. Switzer, manager's report.
Mr. Chairman, one thing, and just food for thought. I, I don't want to create a long discussion tonight about it, but is it worthwhile to consider our groups do have a meeting that we send out memos to the other members? And the reason, I'm just thinking about how we can make our meetings go a little smoother, and maybe catch where there's a disagreement, or there's going to be some controversy before we get to the meeting. You know, just the thought I had, like, when we look back over the, the sign issue with staffers. I went back and I, you know, I thought we had given a detailed report, but really we didn't. It was mentioned in our February meeting, which was three months ago, that hey, this is, you know, we discussed signage with staffers, we gave them some homework, and you know, possibly there's going to be some ordinance changes, but there really wasn't an in-depth conversation as to why we were doing what we were doing. And is it worthwhile, if we have issues like that, that memo go out to the board? You know, so everybody has a reference of what the board group is thinking, and why it's coming before us. So again, just a thought.
I think that would be a good idea, it's almost a summary meeting, that's in the way of the major items discussed. I mean, which we've been hit or miss with, with our boards over the, the last couple of years, with these different working group reports. It would probably be a good idea from a communication perspective to have those attached, and instead doing the report out, the report out really is the memo, memo that went along with that meeting. And then if anybody's got any questions, the manager and the individual board members that were on that working group can answer. Any consensus from the group on that one? It doesn't take action, it's more of a homework assignment for each working group?
Great.
Okay. Ms. Switzer, manager's report.
You have a report, I don't have anything to add unless there's questions.
How is State Road project going, just for everybody's benefit?
State Road. We got an update on timing, actually, we didn't get, that was from the last meeting. But their completion schedule now is August 24th of 2021. They are planning on switching from the east side to the west side, the middle of July. They're about, not quite, a little bit shy of nine, three months behind schedule. So still plugging your way at it.
Yeah, it's three months beyond schedule, given everything that they went through, right now, it's actually done a pretty good job.
In terms of Holland Street and Old Bridge Town Road, there's a lot going on there, we're getting a lot of approvals finally, from the various agencies. Holland Street Bridge, that's, we're trying to get people to move on that. The bridges is in very, very bad shape. We just got another report from the bridge inspector from PennDOT. He also provided some additional documentation. PennDOT actually was out today looking at it, their engineers. They can't help us very much, we, we have, we're stuck with, uh, PPNL is trying to get their 4181 forms in. I'm trying to encourage her to get that accomplished, it's a, it's a PPL pole issue. But it's a liability that the township is having to bear right now, because it's our bridge. And we've been working at this probably 15 years, Perry? Maybe 20, to get this bridge down?
Not, not this particular one, but it's, it's been at least 10.
10.
I mean, we, we knew when we took the last one down that this one was next, so. But yeah, sadly, the bridge reports are coming in, and the wooden timbers are just deteriorating. As Ms. Switzer said, we, we got our last report, and it doesn't look good. And the bridge inspectors keep asking me, you know, where were we at with removal of this bridge? And I just keep telling them that, you know, boy, Amtrak, PennDOT, and PPNL, it's killing us.
So PennDOT's on board, PennDOT, as soon as they get whatever they need, will review it quickly. They know that the urgency to it, I'm in contact with PPNL. Amtrak is, is pretty kosher, where, where they have to do their last traction review, which shouldn't take too long. We're hoping, after talking to McCormick Taylor, to have this out for bid in September. Originally, it was scheduled for sometime next year, so everyone's aware, but I just wanted to make you aware that there's a liability there, that, that we've got to correct. We can't go in and repair it, because it takes that much time to get the approvals, to get the repairs from Amtrak, and we might have it down by then. So our goal is to have, have it down by end of year, is, is what we're shooting for at this point.
Okay, Ms. Switzer, could you go over one other thing, since, for the benefit of our bound this call? Our meeting format for our next meeting. Obviously, we go amber and fed in Friday, at this point, we are looking at reconvening means at the township building, but there's a lot of restrictions at this point, so can you go over a little bit preliminarily what you've determined at this point?
So we go to yellow, hopefully on Friday, which means we can meet up until 25 people. Our planning commission meeting next Wednesday will be the first one to be both in-person meeting and a Zoom meeting. We are talking to them to see who is actually going to be here at the meeting room, and who's going to be zooming in, so we can get a head count. We're going to have registration for this meeting and also for the board meeting, just so we know who's coming, how many are coming, so that we avoid turning people away. Preference is going to be given to residents, business owners, or property owners for meetings, attendance, encouraging people to, to zoom in if they can. We had a setup today, trying to, whoever's present in the room to be able to see, see the Zoom people, and the Zoom people to be able to see what's going on in the meeting room. We think we accomplished that with a couple of wires and a couple of electronic gadgets, that it should work pretty well.
How will that work with, or given that we're doing our small laptops?
The laptops solely for your agenda, like you always use them. And you will have Zoom open, but everything will be muted. So that means your face will be on the screen for everyone to see. We're either going to use the screens, or we're going to use the TV that's in there, we're not sure which one, or both potentially.
Yeah, that's what I was getting, would it be possible for it just to be put up on the screen that we face? That way, we can just keep our laptops for all the attachments, the agenda, the motion list. Trying to balance all that with a Zoom screen on top of it all, on a, a 10-inch screen, a 12-inch screen, is going to be extremely difficult.
You'll have, your Zoom will be open, but we're going to ask you to minimize it. So then the only thing on your screen will be the agenda and your attachments.
I'm thinking for the residents- But I'm thinking for the resins that might call in or, you know, it might it might not hurt to have on the in the background on our background screen. There's a big blow up of the Zoom itself. Just we can just kind of see what's going on in the background while the the meetings occurring and and stuff like that. That way we're not having to check it or even worry about it on our laptops at this point.
Yeah, we're going to do a mockup next week again, once we have all the components together. Anticipation of the PC meeting. If you can tune in, that'd be great. You can see what's going on. Because it's going to really follow with the board meeting the following week. We do have quite a few or a heavy agendas coming up with various subjects. So it will be important to get our act together.
Especially with a conditional use coming up for our second June meeting. That's going to hit 25 pretty quick without even having any residents there. When you look at stenographer, applicants team, which they usually have a couple of engineers, usually have the owners. And then you have their lawyer. So we're going to be this whole pre-registration is going to be important, but we also have to give precedent to the people that are actually presenting. So they need to get a higher priority than a resident at this point.
Well, we're going to ask them to see if they can zoom in because they're used to it. They are consultants.
I can't picture the attorney zooming in. There are certain some that are going to have to be at the meeting. I mean, attorney, the attorney kind of has to be on their on their feet and be flexible. And that's, you just can't do that in a Zoom meeting.
No, we're going to be asking them to limit it to the the bare minimum. Attorney, design professional, and then anybody else. Will be able to can zoom in. So we do limit the number of people that are attend actually in person.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, just two quick comments.
Yes, Mr. Wigglesworth.
Thank you, Ms. Schweitzer. I see on the manager's report that Mr. Madonna is going to be beginning work on the trail this week. So that's great news. I'm guessing it's a couple of weeks worth of work or hopefully.
Sod's up, I believe.
Great.
We're cutting, we were cutting the sod and digging it down. And the next thing we'll do is hauling the stone.
Awesome. And then the last thing I had is for the chief. Chief, I just want publicly after what's gone on this week, thank you and your officers for the job that they do. And just check in with you, see if we've had any incidents. Or is there anything that we need to be aware of?
I appreciate that. I was going to try to jump in here at some point because I think it's important to say that. Over the last five days, it's been it's been tough for us. We've sent officers into the city to help them Sunday night, Monday night. We sent officers that were on the on the 13 SWAT team. We've had officers on the front lines in there. So those guys endured a lot by being there and feeling the frustration of the crowd. And it's a it's a terrible situation all over the country, but here locally. The action of the guys in Minneapolis don't reflect law enforcement here, and they certainly don't reflect. Our department and. I was going back and forth all week with putting out a statement on our Facebook page. I have it written, have it in front of me. I was on a three hour call today with the Lancaster chapter, the N double A C P. We've had a relationship with that organization for about three years where we've been dealing with things like this. To try to learn what what the community wants from the police. And we've been working together. We've had a lot of dialogue and that continued today. So. There was a lot of emotion today on both sides. And I think what we're going to wind up doing in the next day or so is issuing a. A message from the Chiefs Association that would be common messaging rather than all of us releasing our own take on things. But ultimately, the bottom line is that. What occurred there was wrong. It was criminal and we don't condone it. In fact, we outright condemn it and call it criminal. Criminal actions on all these officers out there that were involved with this. They should be prosecuted. They should go to jail and. You know, they. This is where this gets tough for us because this goes against. Goes against what we try to do. So. I'm going to mute myself, but thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
I think we all, we all appreciate everything our police department does, and I appreciate the leadership. You exhibit, and I have no doubt that we would not have a Minnesota Minneapolis incident in our township. I have to probably find it hard to believe that we would even have that with any of the police departments in Lancaster County. Lancaster County is a very welcoming county. Deep religious faith, and that goes against everything we stand for. And I know you guys uphold a very high standard and I applaud you for that.
And this, it's been tough for us because we've been dealing with COVID. We've been dealing with this. It's a lot of demands put on the officers. And a professional and a personal side. The cops all have families. They have their fathers, their husbands. This is just, it tarnishes us and we don't. We're kind of stuck because we don't know how to handle it because we're being painted with a broad brush and it's not. It's not what we want. So we're going to try to fix it, but it's hard to fix something that is imposed upon you and it's and you and we're judged for it. And I understand why, but it doesn't reflect the 99.9% of cops that are here doing this job for the right reason.
Every organization has its bad apples. I mean, and nationwide, obviously, there's, like you said, 99% of the cops are good. There's going to be that point one or even smaller percent. That do things that just tarnish the whole group. But you got to look at the collective good of the whole group and the job that you guys do. At keeping us safe and protecting us and day to day things you do for the community and that far outweighs. The stupid action of one or two individuals. And that shouldn't tarnish you guys, just like the people that have the right to peacefully protest what's going on and they got tarnished by the radical. Idiots right now that are out there trashing stores and looting them. They have nothing to do with peaceful protests. We're out there to just be criminals themselves. So just keep doing the job you're doing. That's my advice to the police department. You guys are going out to any job and let your actions speak for themselves.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else from the board?
Mr. Chairman, two quick, two quick comments. Number one, it's still a ways off. Typically, we schedule one meeting in the month of July. I'm just wondering if perhaps this year, because of all that's going on, you might want to consider maybe an additional meeting. Just something to think about. And then my other thought is on our emergency declaration. Will we need to suspend that for any reason at some point? And if we do need to suspend it, what would the conditions need to be to suspend it?
Goodness, Switzer.
On the first one, in terms of the second meeting in July. We should probably decide that sooner than later because we're kind of staggering and scheduling our agenda items. Based on the fact that there's only one meeting. So that might be a point of discussion tonight. In terms of the declaration, I'll let Diane chime in on that. She actually had a sheet she provided to me in the day regarding that.
That meeting will be July 1st.
No, the scheduled meeting, yeah. We're scheduled for the 15th, but if we have a second, it would be on the first or any other date for that matter, but would be normally the first. Diane, if you want to just chime in.
Sure. So, Mr. Bennett, you had asked. Or commented about rescinding the emergency declaration and what that process looked like at the last board meeting. So I had sent Cindy some notes on that. In case you wanted to discuss it this evening. So I'll read those. To you just to give you an idea of where we're at. So we did write our declaration that it does need to be rescinded. It was written to be in place until rescinded, and it should be rescinded by the same mechanism that it was put in place. Which we've done before. The original guidance that we were given on the emergency management side of things with declarations was that we should maintain our emergency. declarations in place until we achieved the green phase. However, that was when the timeline appeared to be much shorter than what it has become. And so in talking with other local coordinators in reviewing information from PMA. And PSATs and some other EMA based groups. TMA from PSATs, not PSATs themselves. The overall consensus seems to be that. We should continue to keep those declarations in place until we're solidly into yellow. And especially with the recent events that are occurring with the lack of social distancing and mask wearing. And the potential for significant. The significant potential for an outbreak caused by poor choices made in recent days. That we maintain our declarations in place until we are well into yellow and assured. That we're not going to see some type of significant backlash outbreak that would cause us to need. An increase in resources or supplies or a return to our prior mitigation levels. That would then lead to additional staffing costs and those types of things. Because the change in reimbursement between the process that's been in place for years with the FEMA and PMA funding. And all of those forms and that process being known and now the change to a county level process that is still unknown. And the funding numbers still being unknown, there's question as to. If it will be questionable if we continue to need supplies for the outbreak. But no longer have an emergency declaration in place. And there's, there's all kinds of different things floating around out there. So my recommendation would be that at this point, we maintain our declaration as it is. Into July and the goal for me would be that at the July 15th meeting, we would be able to rescind that. As long as we see no significant risk. From the changes that will occur over the next several weeks.
From my perspective, I'd say good for us to to keep that open as well. I think we've so far submitted about $4,000. To two different funding streams and we should get reimbursed hopefully by one of them. Clearly can't get it from both. And on a side note, there's also a possibility that the overtime funding that we that we've. Submitted might get reimbursed too from the state for the officers overtime that for people that went into the city and some of the overtime that we've done. So we're tracking kind of two different expense expense logs. So I think the longer we keep that emergency declaration open, the better chance we'll have of getting funding back.
Another thing to think about too is we are CARES Act community. And the way the language of the CARES Act was written in the new guidance that came out. And actually, we had a meeting the other day talking with the working group that's discussing how we're going to distribute the public part of the CARES Act monies. Emergency service costs now are eligible for reimbursement.
And that's, that's what the county reached out to us and asked us to give them numbers of and examples of receipts.
No, I guess it's going to go a little bit further. It's going to be an email going out for a survey on Friday. It's your cost for providing emergency services, not your increased cost providing emergency services. This is a backdoor way for revenue reimbursement. And it's legitimately written into the CARES Act where emergency service costs only of municipality. So that is your police. If you have paid fire, that'd be paid fire, paid police. EMS. So it's more coming. There's going to be email coming out from the county on Friday. For a survey that the municipalities are to fill out. They're going to begin in one week's notice. Which will allow them to qualify for CARES Act monies. The first CARES Act money will go to immediate direct costs, which be like hand sanitizer and mask. And then the remaining funds will go to public safety costs, which includes labor. So it's a pretty. Pretty substantial number, although the the city's costs are going to well eat into it for their policing costs, so. But we're talking in tunes of of that 95 million, 12 million dollars in the county right now is for municipal use. And we won't get to 12 million with hand sanitizer.
Okay. All right, well, we'll look for a collaborative recommendation from the chief and Ms. Garber. In terms of when to end the declaration and we'll go from there. Just give us, you know, I'd appreciate just a heads up. Couple of days, if we're going to do it on the meeting of the 15th, just, you know, let us know if it's going to be longer than that. That's fine. It's balls into your court. But just a little bit of a heads up would be good. That's all. And then then from a meeting standpoint, I mean, I'm okay with the first. Personally, I'm okay with a meeting on the first. I don't know how about everybody else.
I will not be at the meeting on the first.
Okay.
I have plans at that point to be away from Lancaster.
Okay, well, we can do it.
I'm not saying we don't meet. If there's, if there's a, like we've had in place, if there's a reason to meet, you meet. And this has been relatively light. Our next, our second June meeting is the agenda isn't necessarily going to be light. But if there's a reason to meet, we can certainly meet. If there's not, I think our plans to mills have been pretty. Light at this point. So I have to leave that up to staff to make a recommendation.
Okay.
At this point, we're managing, but if something should come up that really needs some action.
Now, we just add too, there's five weeks in July. So if we do need to meet, we could do it on the 29th. First is going to be tough, I think, for your professionals or it's right in the middle of that. Two week period for July 4.
Okay.
Mrs. Schweitzer, was there ever an acknowledgement or response from the governor's office to our request for opening? Document?
Opening for the parks and playgrounds?
No, a resolution.
For opening businesses and a resolution.
There is no, there is no acknowledgement from the governor's office. We did get acknowledgement from some of the legislators that we sent to. But nothing from the governor.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else before we go to public comment? Okay, I see. Now, Ms. Schweitzer, did we get any emailed public comment ahead of this meeting?
We did not.
Okay, I have nothing in the Zoom chats. Zoom is actually for the first time at all of our bees, but absolutely quiet. Must be doing, we're doing such a wonderful job. We're paying people sleep right now. So seeing that with no public comment, we will adjourn the meeting. I guess the lesson learned for you, me, Ms. Schweitzer is we, I guess, stay on until you. Get your recording done and not exit the meeting. So if everybody else, if you could exit out with that, we're adjourning the meeting. Thank you.